First thing is the approval of the minutes of December 7. I found one minor typo. It was a space. Did you see anything, Kevin?
No.
Mike, anybody seen anything?
No, we don't have Bruce. We're missing Bruce.
I'm right here, just a minute ago. Yeah.
Okay, so Shannon's decommissioned. That's happened to you twice in a row.
Thanks for your service.
About the minutes of the last meeting?
Bruce?
I thought the minutes were fine. I read them and I think we should, I would move that we adopt them as they were submitted.
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay, we carry six, nothing. Okay, the next order of business is we have a public hearing for the Simsbury Land Trust 20-13. We have to open the public meeting, public hearing. Would you call the, read the call to the meeting, please, Kevin?
Yes. Application 20-13 of the Simsbury Land Trust applicant for a special exception pursuant to section 6.3A of zoning regulations to construct a gravel parking lot at the property located at East Wheaton Street, Tannager Open Space Parking Lot H11-106-037A, Zone R80.
Okay, is there someone here representing the land trust?
It is me.
Okay.
Karen Brandt.
Yes. Can you please explain the what you plan to do?
Oh, Lordy. I was told I would not have to explain because you guys had the plan and I just got it last week. But I understand it's been approved by the historic district and the inland wetlands and it's it's the purpose of doing this is we have a parking lot, a parking area on a piece of land right adjacent on the other side of Lucy Brook and I guess there's some runoff issues that adversely affect the neighbors and also that make the parking area very hard for citizens to use. And so we have a new proposed parking area on the other side of Lucy Brook and and it's a gravel parking lot, so we understand it will not affect the flood plain.
Your drawing shows it on the south side of Lucy Brook.
Oh, then good. Then I'm wrong because I looked at the map and thought it, I thought it changed the parking area. Right now, the current parking area is on the south side of Lucy Brook. I just couldn't see Brook on the map.
I drove by today and I looked at it in the map. Anybody else have any questions before making comments?
Well, I have a similar question, but I drove by it today. I couldn't figure out heads or tails over there because the snow was too deep and I didn't really know the landmarks, but and I'm looking at the plan. I don't see an identification of Lucy Brook on the plan.
Yeah, I did, I could.
I actually, that's relatively close to me, so I actually go there a lot to take, you know, do the little hike up there. So I'm assuming it's the same parking area that exists. You just want to put gravel on the existing parking. Is that correct?
That was my understanding. When I looked at the map, it looked like it was different, but I'm happy to be corrected because because I like, I like where it is now.
Well, that's what it appeared to me. I was just curious. I can't see how you could possibly put it on the other side without doing some explanation, though. I expect that it's in the original location.
Okay, so love it. Okay, so let me correct myself. It's in, it's, it's in the same place and the reason to construct the parking area in a different way is to correct runoff issues and to make it easier for citizens to use.
Any other comments?
Yeah, you say it's where it is now, but right now, when you go in, you typically turn left and this only has three spots on the left and most of the spots to the right.
Well, our packet included a document that was the construction from Roderick Construction, the proposal. Step number six on there says rake and seed former parking lot.
Yeah, so it's not where it is now.
Okay, so.
It, it looks to me, I've got the map up here and the drawing up here on my other monitor, it looks like it's probably fifty or seventy feet to the north of where the old one was.
Again, it just, and I can't look at the document now because of my, you know, locked out of PC again or laptop, but the parking lot as it stands, the unpaved parking lot pretty much abuts the Brook. So I'm not sure how much more north they could go. Unless they're just defining it and maybe people have made the lot, the unpaved area larger than it actually was intended to be.
Yeah, Diane, actually, that's, that's what's occurring out there. Since you don't have a real formal parking area, it's kind of free for all. It's going larger. It's created erosion set in the control issues, especially with individuals. For example, last February and March, decided to visit this property while the ground was in a free saw situation. And we experienced a lot of mud getting tracked out in the road. The ruts were everywhere. The land trust actually tried directing people away. So this was the attempt to formalize and reduce the area. So the portion of what's been, what's been disturbed with the current parking, as, as Bruce kind of indicated earlier, will be raked and seeded and restored to grass. And this parking lot is, it's closer to Lucy Brook than where everyone's parking. And a lot of that location, that, that location was chosen due to sightline reasons. They needed, we're looking for a spot that had the best sightline for people entering and exiting this, this facility.
Gotcha.
Okay, now the location of the handicap parking place looks to me like it's a, it's kind of in the wrong place for being able to get in and out of there easily. There's a parking place to the north of it that's right off the corner of the blind spot of a car parked there. It seemed to me that it would be better if that, if that handicap spot was moved over to the left, to the north left and became the first spot in that block of three. But any comments, Mike, any engineering comments on that?
So, so actually, I'm still waiting on comments from Jeff on this one. And Dave, you bring up a good point. I also noticed that and have a concern that you have conflict between the handicap or the ADA accessible parking space and the other spaces to the north. I would prefer to see that ADA space relocated so that it's not being blocked out by other parking spaces. Because especially if you're dealing with a van situation, you have a larger vehicle coming in and out. Hence why the five-foot strip on this, it just, I don't like having that, those two parking spaces where the northern space, you're basically backing out, blocking someone off to the east. Yes, it should be relocated.
Okay.
And like I said, I have not received written comments yet from Jeff on this one.
Okay. Well, I, I think we shouldn't close this tonight. Anybody have any more comments? There is one comment that should be read into the record. We received an email from a neighbor across the street, Katie McQuaddie. She says, "I understand that the zoning meeting is not open to the public, but we may submit comments. Please submit the following to the zoning commission. My family and I live across the street from Tannager Hill parking area and have several concerns about the amount of traffic this brings into our neighborhood. The area is currently unregulated with often more than 24 cars parked in the grassy area on the side of the road and on neighboring properties. The high traffic in this area has broken the natural land barrier, which causes flooding that damages our lawn and driveway. We had part of our lawn and driveway repaired this spring, which was costly, and part of that area has already eroded due to the constant runoff rainwater from the Tannager Hill site. The proposed parking lot appears to address that, but the location cited on the map in the proposal isn't the area that is currently flooding. We would appreciate more detailed information on the location. We would also like more information on the native plantings that are proposed. Will they properly screen the space so that the parked cars are not visible through the road? We're also concerned about how the Simsbury Land Trust will maintain this site. How will they limit the amount of space for parking and how will they prevent people from parking on the street? The location is at a bend in the road and cars parking along the road create a hazard to other drivers. We also feel that this space should not be open year round and it should be closed after dark. There's a residual, this is a residential neighborhood and it is concerning to have cars arriving and leaving at all hours of the day and night, every day of the week. We understand that the Simsbury Land Trust is pleased to own these trails, but we ask that they show the same respect for the surrounding properties and families that live in the neighborhood. Thank you, Katie McQuaddie." She doesn't give her address, but I believe she's the driveway right across the street on East Wheaton Street.
Um, yeah.
I don't, I don't think so.
I think she's on, I think she's on the opposite, is it Heather Lane?
She's in 133 East Wheaton Street.
Yeah, the one across the street's 137, Dave.
Okay.
She, her number is 133, according to the voters list.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's not the house that's across, exactly across the street.
One, we got the houses in there and this lady.
133 is just south of, and on the opposite side of the street of where the current parking spot is. I'm looking at it on the map right now.
Yeah, okay. But we're, we're gonna have Jeff look at both the runoff and the engineering of the actual parking area.
Can we keep the public hearing open then?
Yeah.
I would ask, I would recommend that you keep the public hearing open so that we can get, just in case Jeff has comments and we need some revised documents from the land trust, then they have the ability to provide more information to us.
Okay, can we have a motion to continue the?
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. I had one other thing, that there, there seems to be a misunderstanding and the letter written or the email sent cites the fact that this meeting isn't open to the public and that's not correct. And I think it's important that somebody let her know that that's not correct. This meeting is open to the public. It's a Zoom meeting, but it is what it is. It's open to the public and as are all of our meetings.
Right, they can't attend. They could come on Zoom. They could join on Zoom.
Right, so are, all of our meetings continue to be open to the public via Zoom, right? And she should be informed of that. That's my point.
Okay.
Staff will, staff will respond, responder email to confirm we received this. It was read into the record and also relay that message that the public hearing is continued and members of the public are permitted to participate via Zoom with the commission.
Send her to the town website to click in and join the meeting. One other thing, this, this topic has been before us before. Was it a year ago? Two years ago?
It was a couple of years ago.
Yeah, it's been a while.
And they withdrew the application.
Oh, okay, okay.
So maybe just to give a back-
Why it's, I'm gonna come back. I thought we approved it. Okay.
They, they withdrew that previous application because they failed to secure a certificate of occupancy, a certificate of appropriateness from the historic district commission, that's why. So this time they have their approvals from HTC, Inland Wetlands, and now they made it to zoning finally. Last time they applied without their approvals from the other commissions.
Well, okay. I think they would do well to have some reinforcements on the presentation from other members of the organization who were more intimately involved maybe, although I really appreciate your effort to present the thing, Karen. Well done.
Hi, can I make a couple of remarks on the comments that were conveyed by?
You may, but remember, this is not a debate situation. Go ahead.
Okay, all right, understood. So our, our new plan does call for a restricted number of spaces, which I think addresses a lot of her concerns. There were a lot, I don't, I go there all the time. I've never seen 24 cars. I, I think the most I've ever seen is 10. And I think there was a problem for a while while we were in the middle of this COVID crisis where everybody was looking for places to go hike and this was a very popular area and people did start to park on the road and I think that's been curtailed. There were signs that were put up that told people not to park on the road. So I think the traffic is not, is not, I haven't seen the traffic in the manner that, that, that she cites. And generally, our trails are not, are only open during the daylight. We, we have signs that say people should not, they're only open from dawn to dusk.
Okay, thank you. You'll, you'll be able to speak again at, at the next meeting.
Or maybe some other lucky person will be here.
Okay, you know, we have a motion to continue this public hearing to January. What is it, Mike? The third?
Fourth, I believe. Hold on.
I'll move, Mr. Chairman.
Fourth.
So you, Mike? Okay, Mike made the motion.
Second.
Second by Bruce. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay, the motion carries six, nothing. We continue this hearing till January 4. Okay, next item of business is application 20-15 of Robert Bylikwashi, who is a hockey goalie? No. No, that's not a goalie stick. Anyway, can, can you open the public hearing, Kevin? Read, read the call.
I'm having a little tough time getting back to, yeah, okay, there we go. Okay, application 2015 of Robert, oh yeah, Bylove Vaskey, applicant 22GC, 2012 LLC owner for a special exception pursuant to section 4-, 4-6B of zoning regulations to expand outdoor patio at the property located at 836 Hoppe Middle Street, H09-227-001A-1B Zone SCS, Simsbury Center Zone.
Thank you. Okay, Robert, can you tell us what you're doing? You're on mute.
You're on mute. No, at the top.
Still muted.
Uh, there we go.
There you go.
Sorry about that. Uh, yes, apparently we have a temporary patio that was allowed through the COVID ordinances and it's been, it's become quite popular. We would like to make it a permanent situation and that's why we're coming before you guys to extend the patio to become a three-season patio.
Now, you have a, a patio liquor permit. Is that what, can you tell us?
We currently, yep, we currently have a patio liquor permit, but any changes to, to the actual permit, i.e. extending the patio or adding a service bar would require us to apply for a new permit. So we do have to make applications. We, we do have to make an, an application for a new liquor permit. Yes.
Okay. Questions from the commission?
Go ahead, yeah.
Oh, no, it, that, I just want to, this is Iron Horse, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure. Um, and are you going to be making modifications to, like, are you looking to just extend the patio as it exists or are you planning on making modifications as part of that patio?
No, uh, no, we, well, we're gonna continue the bluestone across the entire 1,200 square feet that's currently temporary. And then we want to make it a three-season patio, potentially a 10-month patio by sealing it in with a canopy or hardtop, it'll probably be a hardtop, but it already has a roof. We want to put sides on, we have one wall on the backside and then we're gonna add three walls and have windows that can retract completely so that it can still be an outdoor patio during the good months and then we could close the windows, open the top ventilation and allow and allow ventilation. So it'll be, it'll be a well-bented patio area come November or March when it's still a bit colder. We'll have, we'll have auxiliary heating pumped in, but still allow it to have an outdoor breeze.
And it looks like there's like a little bar area built in there?
Yes.
So how does this space then qualify under, or does it, under the existing COVID limitations in terms of it's, it's outdoor or is it indoor? Once you put up all the walls, does it then become indoor?
Uh, well, with, with, with the windows being fully retractable, it'll still give an outdoor presence. It might, it might not qualify as being an indoor space. So we would still take?
Actually.
Go ahead.
Actually, we've, I've asked this question to the health district on other related matters. Once in, in, four sides are enclosed, it's considered indoor space. So under the current sector rules, not your zoning regs, the 50% occupancy rule will come into play. That's just under COVID, not under, you know, status quo business. Rob's looking at status quo business as expanding the entire area. But just to be clear, should, should we still be in phase 2B when, when he builds out, builds this area out, should he secure his approvals? He will be limited to 50% occupancy in that area. And both myself and the health district will work with Rob on that.
What, are there building code issues with, has Henry seen this? I mean, I'm a little surprised. I, I thought there was a reference to the, at least the east-facing wall calls for a 30-inch stone wall, 30-inch-high stone wall, and then eight feet of canvas wall above that. I'm, I'm intrigued by that and I'm wondering, is, is this something that Henry would have been asked to look at? Or, or you know, the town engineer? Has anybody else looked at this or just got some?
Fire marshal, health district, we've seen this.
Was that a yes or no? I didn't, you broke up.
I couldn't understand it.
I, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, sorry, Mike. I met with the fire marshal. He looked at the plans. He had his input on the plans. We are gonna have two doors in the patio area and he suggested, he made some suggestions on the, the exit lighting over those doors. But the, the fire marshal has looked at, at these plans.
And and so the building official, Henry Miga, you haven't checked. He's not part of this, Mike? Is that the case?
So the fire prevention code is gonna be the biggest hurdle for this, for this work because it's gonna be assembly use. If Patrick is okay, the, the building code, other than ADA and a few other items like mechanical, which this, we're not at the level of mechanical yet, he shouldn't have any stumbling blocks. The fact that, that Patrick gave him a blessing, that's why he decided to apply. Because the fire prevention code, like I said, is the tougher of the two codes and the building code from like safety perspective will basically goes back, backseat to the fire prevention code. Henry will get involved, like I said, more mechanical, structural. And he's still, he's getting, working with his contractors on details on the wall, which, you know, I can report that DRB reviewed this, although we're kind of getting into the site plan amendment application that was also on your agenda. DRB requested additional information on treatment, just a color rendering of what it's gonna look like outside. Just because we just approved that facade update to Andy's Plaza, was it maybe the past 60 days?
Does this require a CO to use it?
Yeah, he will get, go through a permitting process. A certificate of occupancy will be required.
Okay, so the building official will pass on it at that point?
So how far out from the overhang does this extend?
It doesn't extend. It's completely under the overhang.
Okay.
Some of your current space goes out from under the overhang.
Uh, yeah.
Right?
Yes, on, on the existing patio.
Yes.
About 50% of the patio is outside of the overhang. Even where we currently have the patio, there are a few tables. The overhang is shorter on that side. It's only about eight-foot overhang. But this is actually a 33-foot overhang from the end, the edge of the building into the parking lot area.
But just to be clear that the answer to my earlier question is that once the, the walls are enclosed, this is, this can't be categorized as outdoor dining. This is indoor. It's subject to whatever the limitations.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It will be considered indoor.
But that doesn't affect the other two patios, the designated patio spaces in these drawings, right? They're outdoor.
Yes.
I mean, one has no roof over it.
No, no, no.
They remain outdoor dining.
Those, because there's nothing, those are considered completely outdoor, it's, it's complete outdoor dining on the other side.
Right, but they're designated as two different patios. There's something between them. One has a full roof and one has half, no roof. It's half a roof and the other one has no.
These will be designated as two separate patios.
But what you have now is two areas with seating. One has a full roof. One has, this area that you're working on, that you're proposing is gonna have a full roof over it. It's already there.
Yes.
And there are currently on your drawings, two areas identified as existing patios.
Oh.
One has no roof and one has.
No, no. No, the two areas that, that both say existing patio have no roof. That's one, that's one side of the entranceway and the other side of the entranceway.
Got it. Thank you.
Sorry about that, computer.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Do we have any public comments, Mike?
No, you don't have anything on this application.
Now, this is this is a special exception and we are considering the, the considerations from our regulations. So can you repeat this, the criteria?
I'm not clear on, it's not obvious to me what the special exception is here.
It's for a liquor service outside or in this patio.
So, so the special exception is strictly the expansion of the expansion of liquor license. And then the site plan is the, the physical expansion of the patio space. He needs, he needs the special exception because he has to modify his liquor license with the state of Connecticut and under your regulations, all liquor licenses, except for certain temporary licenses, require approval from the commission. And then with Dave's-
The only documents, the documents I got didn't refer to a liquor permit, but I, I heard the applicant refer to that. Only documents, the documents I got didn't refer to a liquor permit, but I, I heard the applicant refer to that issue.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Our regulations, um, say that he should tell us what permit he is applying for. In this case, the patio permit is my understanding. And the considerations, Mike?
So you have, you have six criteria. It's orderly development, property values, public safety, traffic consideration, landscaping, in relation to utility drainage, impacted community facilities. So orderly development, um, you know, this is a, uh, proposed, well, the proposed renovation is kind of keep, they're trying to keep it the character of the building. That's why, um, they're looking at ways to, uh, match some of the facade improvements. The property values, it's, it's an investment and will result in increased in property values. Uh, public safety, uh, the work based on the reviews by, uh, Patrick, um, would not, as it relates to the Connecticut Fire Prevention Code, uh, should not pose a hazard. We also put in there the, the Connecticut Building Code, but that's strictly from a life safety perspective. Obviously, from a structural standpoint, we need more construction drawings, um, traffic considerations, um, while the expansion will result in a reduction of parking spaces, they're losing four parking spaces. Um, the applicant has demonstrated that the use of the temporary area has not created a traffic issue from a parking or traffic circulation perspective. Um, because, because I think also COVID has given Rob the ability to test drive the area, at least in the sense of coordinating it off and not using it for parking. Uh, landscaping, I, I didn't say was applicable with this because he has, you know, what he's proposing long term is, uh, a, a knee wall that will be installed that will provide one barrier system. Secondly, um, this area is going to be enclosed for three seasons. Um, so it's going to look building. I don't, I don't see a landscaping issue here. Lastly, the relation to utility system, drainage systems and impacted community, uh, facilities. The site is served by public water and sewer. The work is within an area that's currently a covered building overhang. So there's no, really no issues when it comes to impact to, um, stormwater management or, uh, utility capacities.
Okay, I just want to make sure that while we're still in public hearing, that any of those considerations are out in the open. So everybody understands that we can ask questions of the applicant at this point. Um, so if anybody has any questions about those aspects of our consideration, we should ask them at this point where he can answer us. Okay?
Can we approve the, um, the expansion without approving the site plan at this point? Because I, I think we need more information on what the, what this will look like.
Well, the, I think Mike is going to tell us that the DRB has asked for some more information. So we would probably want to, um, table the, uh, site plan. But, uh, I don't think we have to table the special exception for the alcohol use.
Yeah, that's where I was headed.
Okay.
What do you say, Mike? Is that, you agree with that?
I agree with that. Yeah, because at least then Rob can start applying to the state for his liquor license and start that process, that fun filled process that he'll go through. Um, and then Rob was given some very, uh, direct marching orders from, um, DRB. They wanted a color rendition of the, the enclosure and how that's, how that's going to look. And like I said earlier, as it relates to the proposed facade renovations for the Andy Plaza. Is that, those, the, those renovations are scheduled to occur this coming spring in 2021.
Uh, what is your timing on this, Rob?
Um, it'll probably be March, April before we can get going on it because the concrete is no longer getting poured. So we're going to have to wait until springtime when, when the frosts has come and gone.
Okay, but you can go ahead and apply for your liquor permit change, right?
Yeah, yes. I, well, I can't start anything until that I get the approval for the liquor permit. And then we can start pushing forward. So that, that's, that's the first step and lining up the contractors and whatnot. So we're not, we're not doing anything until March, April.
Okay. Any more comments from the commission, questions?
There any drainage, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, is there any drainage wells or anything like that in underneath the building? I didn't see it on the site plan, but I'm going to ask it anyway, just in case. There's, there's no like storm drains in any of those parking spots or anything like that, that you're using in the, in the proposed space, right?
I, I believe that there are storm drains in the parking lot. There are no storm drains under the overhang that we're, that we're, um, enveloping.
Yeah, yeah. I, I didn't think so. And like I said, I, I didn't see them on the plan, but the, the, you know, that I'm not a master reader of those plans. So thank you.
Yeah.
More questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a
Okay.
Mike Doyle made the motion to close it. Second by
Second.
By Ann? Okay. All right. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Any opposed? No?
Aye.
Who's opposed? I didn't hear any, well, abstained? No, so it passes six, nothing. Okay? Thank you. Um, we've closed the public hearing. Now, um, next order of business is to take up the special exception? No. Mike, we don't have the, uh, application 2015 consideration.
Yes, I, I just noticed that. I'm sorry, because I was out of the majority of last week. Um, you should have that on old business. Uh, it's the next item on your agenda. You can vote to add that item. And then you could take up the special exception. I apologize that that's my fault.
Okay, no problem. Can I have a motion to, uh, consider application 20-15 under old business?
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? This has to be of two thirds, I think. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I oppose? Okay, it carries six, nothing. Okay, thank you very much. Now let's, uh, talk about the special exception 20-15. This is to approve the patio liquor service in the new area. Any, do you have a, uh, any advice for us, Mike?
So I, I, I provided a draft motion in, in the, um, staff report. Under our new regs now, we have to go through and make findings of those six areas that I discussed. Um, I kind of, I went through and, and the comments I made to the commission earlier are from my, uh, staff report. I mean, the commission could make the findings you feel appropriate. I'm just suggesting this based on the record provided. Um, and I would say that with, with the, as it relates to the, the staff report, just any, if, if you were to make any motions, make it just specific to the special exception. Obviously, we'll talk about the site plan at, at our next meeting, once, should, once he's complete with DRB.
Okay, is there a, we, we don't have a copy of that, do we?
Yeah, we do.
We do?
Yeah.
Yep, staff, staff report, iron horse of expansion, PDF.
Okay, is somebody ready to make a motion?
Mike? Go for it, Mike.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve application 20-15 of Robert Bylick, this Bashi. Applicant 22GC 2012 LLC owner for a special, special exception pursuant to section four dash six B of zoning regulations to expand outdoor patio at the property located at 836 Hot Meadow Street, eight, zero, nine, dash, two, two, seven, dash, zero, zero, one, A, dash, one, B, Zone SCZ. In granting the special exception, the commission finds proposed expansion has demonstrated compliance in the following areas. One, orderly development. The proposed renovation is in keeping character, is in keeping character for the location within Simsbury Center. Two, property values. The investment will result in an increased value of the space as a direct result of the improvements. Three, public safety. The work does not create hazards as it relates to the Connecticut Fire Prevention Code or the Connecticut Building Code. Four, traffic considerations. While the expansion will be, will result in the reduction of parking spaces, the applicant has demonstrated that the, that using the area for temporary outdoor dining has not created traffic issues from a parking or traffic circulation perspective. Five, um, we see no landscaping issues or landscaping issues are not applicable. Six, uh, relationship to you, utility systems, drainage systems and impact to the community facilities. The site is served by public water and sewer, as Mr. Glidden highlighted. And the work is within an area that is currently covered by, uh, building overhang. There are no issues, there are no other issues. The notice of grant for special exception needs to be filed with the town of Simsbury Clerk in order for it to become effective.
Here, a second?
I'll second.
Second, thank Kevin? Okay. Further discussion?
Yeah, can I ask you a question? Do we need to in here at all reference the fact that this is for a liquor license? As Bruce was saying, you would not know that this is
There's no mention in any document I see, so, but obviously I did, somehow I'm not getting all the documents or I can't find them. Because I didn't, I don't seem to have the piece that was just read to us. But that doesn't mean I'm not in favor, but I do find, you know, I don't know what to say, but I don't see anything that says anything about a liquor permit.
Well, the, the, the section of our zoning regs that it refers to is the alcoholic beverages section. And it says that he should say what permit he's applying for. We, we had that stated in the patio permit.
Okay. I'll just make up another sentence and add it to the motion.
Well, you can make it up and we will make a modification. No? Bruce, are you going to add a sentence?
No, I'm not. I'm, I'm not the applicant. I, I let the applicant or Mike can do it.
So you could Talking about section four dash six B, which is, you know, liquor permits. So really, so
It's moot, really.
Yeah.
And we voted, right? You all vote?
No, we
No, we did not.
No.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Everybody, nobody opposed anybody? Abstained anyone? Okay, this is six, nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Sorry for altering your name.
That's, no, that's okay. We'll get it right. It's Bilic Bashi.
Bilic Bashi.
Four syllables. Yeah.
And, and you are actually at the restaurant, right?
I'm at the restaurant right now. Yes, I am.
I thought you were in your game room when you had a hockey stick behind you.
No, no, other than to beat the kids, I wouldn't have a hockey stick on the wall.
Thank you. Okay, now, the next, uh, item of business is a new business, which is the application 20-14 for the site plan amendment. Mike, uh, and Bob, can you tell us the site plan amendment? By the way, the site plan amendment should reference the, uh, the right section. The one that I saw previously, reference the old section.
That's correct.
But has it been changed?
But
Anyway, it's a site plan, it's Mike, go ahead.
So, so, uh, as I reported earlier, um, this was reviewed by the design review board tonight. Um, and they're asking for some additional information, uh, specifically for treatment of the exterior walls. We have a black and white rendering. I showed you the floor plan during the, during the public hearing, but there was also, uh, a, an elevation drawing kind of showing what the walls would look like. Um, but it's black and white and Rob is working with his contractors as we speak on getting some colored renderings for the design review board. So I just asked that the commission table action on this because I think you're going to want to see a color rendering on what this thing's going to look like. Otherwise, as we discussed earlier, I mean, he's, he's utilizing the area that he has been using, um, temporarily due, uh, for temporary outdoor dining, courtesy of COVID. Um, expansion is not going beyond the existing covered, uh, portion. Uh, the one thing is noted with the granting special exception, there are four parking spaces that will be taken up by this new expanded area. However, we have not seen any parking issues as, as he's been operating this area, uh, all, uh, through the 2020 season. And Rob, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Um, no, we'll have a much clearer picture after we meet on the fourth of January. That's exactly what, what the, um, outdoor scape will look like from the road.
Mike, would, would this not actually increase the parking requirement?
That I was thinking.
Because actually, aren't you increasing these, the interior size of, of the building?
So, so, but we've, but also, you know, even right now, they've increased the number, total number of tables that are there. Although obviously they're in a little bit of a, uh, modified occupancy inside. Yes, the overall parking will increase. However, you, you also have that provision in your regs. You can take credit for parking within 500 feet of the facility. Um, so you have several reservoirs that he can get credit to. And along with the, the actual, you know, the front portion of the Andy's Plaza, et cetera.
Well, yeah, this would apply for the whole Andy's Plaza, the parking, not, not just for his, not just his piece. So, um, no, I don't know. I, I just was wondering if you had calculated the parking requirement based on this area now being considered almost indoor space. So before the next meeting, if we could do, if you could just take a look at that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Isn't there a rule of thumb, how many square feet of restaurant space requires so many parking places?
It's a one parking space for every 300 square feet.
Okay.
Under the center code.
We're talking probably between 300 and 500. What's the added square feet?
About 1,200 square feet.
1,200 square feet. So in principle, you need
Four parking spaces.
Four parking spaces.
Yeah, then we're losing four.
So eight parking spaces.
But you don't know over the whole site, there might be enough.
Yeah, there's, the parking goes way down, way south, and then you've got above Andy's. But when the, the new drive through section comes in, then you lose some space above. Anyway. Mike, if you can, uh, look into that for us, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'll have an answer for the next meeting.
Okay. We have a motion to, uh,
Yeah, motion to table that, application 2014.
2015, 14, no, it's 14, sorry.
Yeah, we went backwards.
Yep. A second?
I'll second it.
Mike raised his hand first. If he made the motion, Mike, uh, seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Nope. Six, nothing. It carries and we will take it up again on the fourth of January.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does, I'm sorry. Does, I'm sorry, does application twenty? Does the application twenty dash fifteen allow us to get a sign off on the liquor permit?
Yes.
And then we're we're gonna come before you guys to finalize. The 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 look of. The expansion.
Correct.
Correct.
Perfect. Okay.
Okay, good, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And good luck. Mike. Do you need more comments, administration and?
So I I met with Bob DiCrescento last week, we're hoping for your January meeting, we'll have that draft of the signed regulations based on the discussion with the commission at the last meeting. He's he's adding his definitions and other portions that you'd like pursuant to some of the cases. I I also would like to ask the commission that maybe in January, can we have a conversation about uses that are allowed in the industrial zoning districts? The only reason I'm I want to bring this up, I want to tackle an issue that proactively that COVID has kind of put to our forefront. Right now in Simsbury, your industrial zones, one of the primary uses is office space. You have approximately two hundred thousand square feet of vacant office space in your industrial zoning districts. Which may not be filled. And one thing I've heard as staff, as a staff member of past seven years I've been here is. There are some landowners that like to explore other uses. I know that we brought this up in the past with the commission, I I kind of would like to have that conversation. I've started kind of doing inventory with other communities, what they allow in their industrial zoning districts, to kind of get a better handle on it. And then maybe come up with a kind of list of what could be appropriately added to the use chart.
So you're gonna make us sort of an assessment of surrounding communities, Mike, and. Identify some scenarios that would make sense for us based on what others are doing. Sounds good to me.
Okay.
I really, I thought that the guys over on West Street really had to do what seemed like a lot. To get a dance studio in. And then it was a good alternative use that no one seemed to have any reason to oppose. So it's a bigger issue, though.
Yeah, with with just that that square footage you have of vacancy vacancies right now, I'm just, I'm concerned that. We're not gonna have the same real estate market jumping at office space.
Right. But what seems to be happening around the rest of the world is most of that is is morphing into residential.
Which which brings up my other thing I want to talk to the commission, so the next project, so we're doing our sign regs, I'd like to talk about industrial uses. Is the pad regulations. I would like to get an RFQ out this spring to start with the pad regulations. And have a fresh set of eyes look at those pad regs. I I would like to have a consultant to do that, to have a just a third party go through it. It's not connected with the regs, not connected with some of the applications. And really kind of look to see if there's something that that that. Is broken with our regs, how do we fix it to get the results we want? So that's another project I'd like to do this spring.
Good, my standpoint, anybody else have any comments about it?
Well, I would make the comment, I agree with this, but I would make the comment that last time, two times, we've actually had outside consultants do work. I don't know that we're entirely satisfied with the work, I'm not entirely satisfied with the Simsbury Center Zone or the Hartford. Code, either one of them, and both of them are outside people, and I don't think either one of them. Were were better than staff could have done, but.
Well, the thing is, Kevin, when the staff are working on that, they're not doing. What they're really hired on a regular basis to do, so.
I know, I just doesn't, you just can't wipe your hands by saying you're giving it to a consultant, because I don't think we got a.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could have.
Remember, your consultant will give you what you ask them for, and I think to some extent we got what we asked for in those cases.
Yeah.
We had a. We had a lot of people pushing for mixed views and a lot of different things, and those are the results we got. Maybe we need to be a little more careful in what we ask them to do.
Well, I think the question for us is, when, it's a little larger in my mind, and it's, the question is. Does our configuration of regulations, are we in a contemporary position in terms of mixed use? Or do we have this mixed bundle of regulations that are, so they're too tangled, and so we have more than we need and and not a lot of activity, not enough activity and. Plenty of regulation, not enough activities, so not enough interest, but. So I guess when I think of that charge, Mike, to look at the pad regulation. Hmm, and then I wonder about, I still don't know much about cluster housing and some other things that are in our regulations that. You know. It make me wonder, you know, but you gotta start somewhere.
Yeah, I think we're just not getting mixed, we're getting housing is coming out of all of these things and. You know, I don't think the public likes all of the housing that we're getting. But there's not a whole lot of business opportunities right now.
Well, we know in twenty twenty eleven, when the pad was adopted, that it could have had language in it. That would have required building in in some sequence or proportionality, so that when you propose. Retail or you propose residential, in addition to proposing. You know, other uses that they need to be built in proportion, you can't just build the apartments and nothing else. But when that that got voted down, that got shouted down, as a matter of fact, multiple times.
And Bruce, I drove through. Our latest thing down there and I'm on a street across from the tennis center. And, you know, they've got that nice building we forced them to build in front, it's been sitting there idle.
Right.
Fated for a long time, so.
Yeah.
I I'm not comfortable with, you know, demanding that somebody. Build some monument to get the rest of it done.
And so that's my point to Kevin, that you think that, why, you know, we do hear from residents that. You know, where's everything else? Oh, we see our apartments going up, what else, what else, and? Part of it is, if we're not gonna insist on it. Yeah, I mean, you get what you require, really, and. You know, in that particular development, that. Requirement was agreed to by the developer and they built one of the two buildings.
Yeah, so the other one is sitting there, the other space is sitting there waiting.
But down at Aspen Glen, you got nothing, you just have open space.
No, the master plan has two buildings on it.
But the result to Kevin's point is the those two building, uh, well, I'm not sure which property you're talking about, but.
In front of the Aspen Green Apartments.
Yeah, there's nothing down there, you know, actually, he's doing a little bit or better now, you know, he's actually come back in years later. With his gym and whatever his other thing, oh, there's this storage.
Storage thing.
Well, that's a, that's sort of a mixed. Description, though, Kevin, who was the guy that came back on the storage thing is the property owner.
Right.
And not the, you know, it's not the Aspen Green folks or the people.
Well, he owns the whole thing, I mean, he.
Yeah.
No, actually, he sold the the area that has Aspen Green, the apartments, that is owned by another entity.
Right.
Mark sold that, he retained ownership of the rest of the of that that development.
Yeah.
But the apartments were sold.
But does.
To. Garden Homes out of New Jersey.
Yeah.
Right, but does Garden Homes have the property between the the built up apartments and Route ten, Mike?
No, no, Mark Greenberg holds.
Right, and he holds the the master plan, the responsibility to execute the master plan. Right, okay, and that has two buildings on it.
That's correct.
Right.
It just goes to where zoning doesn't necessarily. Lead to to development. You know, that's kind of where we went with the the mixed uses, that we wanted some commercial, more commercial development, but. You know, the economy is just not conducive to commercial development. So what we're seeing is residential development.
Right.
And. You know, with your consultant, I'd like to know how they feel, you know, that's one part of the reason why we're asking these developers to come in was to see. What what is possible, what's the possibility in the in the environment we're in?
And remember, Greenberg's comment was, you know, you gotta have people, when when the people come in, then the the rooftops bring other other development. And maybe that's true.
Dave, every time I drive down forty four and I go past the climax road, it's still closed sign. And they're progressing and supposedly in the spring are gonna open the five retail buildings that are under construction, they're not working on one apartment. Now, they've promised, they've theoretically committed to build three hundred residential units as part of that development, they're not working on any of them, they're working on the retail. So it's exactly opposite.
But they're on forty four, which has has the traffic volume that justifies that. And retail is not looking as good as it used to.
And there's still, in Avon and Canton, there's a lot of empty retail space. So, you know, I'm not sure if they leased the five other than the Whole Foods.
Well, I'd be surprised if they were building them without tenants. But I'm not a developer, yeah.
They have the anchor, so that will probably attract some other.
You know. But they've had that anchor for a couple of years.
Right.
And we still haven't seen any anything about others, but I, you know, that's not our worry, it's just inconsistent with what Greenberg told us, but. You know, he has his own view.
And his own opinion.
Right. And he's, he's, he actually told us once when he came to a zone meeting, a zoning meeting way back, that. He was very pleased to tell us what a successful. Property. Management firm he owned in in New York City, that at one time he was the largest, his firm was the largest. Controller of residential properties in the city of New York. And then he decided to focus his time and energy on the state of Connecticut, relocated to to Litchfield. I don't know if he's still in New York at all, but.
No, he's in Litchfield.
Yeah, but he's been very successful, apparently, according to him, yeah.
Well, he owns the property, so.
That's for sure, yeah.
It's something we know, and he's doing something in Canton, it's the, he's found a lot of rocks there, so.
Well, I found it interesting, not to belabor it, but others, I'm sure, saw the reports on the. The last planning and zoning meeting on that development and. The engineering lead had reported to the Planning and Zoning Commission there that they would have to take out seven thousand six hundred and fifty truckloads. At twenty four tons per truckload of rocks, right?
Wow.
Seven thousand six hundred and fifty truckloads and twenty four tons per truckload. Twenty four yards per truck, something like that, it's just.
More than he told us, right?
He told us about eight, well, he didn't, he didn't guess, he wouldn't.
I thought it was eighty thousand yards.
Yeah, it was, and that's nowhere near. What he told them, but we didn't press him very hard on it, he danced and we let him go, but that. Our issue was, the only part of that that's in Simsbury is the support. Section, the actual working section of the car building.
Right.
The service.
It's the one story wing that faced McDonald's Restaurant.
But.
Okay.
Future development would be part of Simsbury, though.
It's more of the properties in Simsbury.
Oh, right, but there there has been mentioned that at Canton Planning and Zoning that there is a proposal. Being developed for the balance of the property, residential mostly in Simsbury.
Right.
And that's what was in the paper.
Right. Okay, any more comments? Eight oh six.
Yeah, the only thing is, you know, in our, to point out in our correspondence, we actually have a letter from Bloom Energy. And I don't know if others saw that.
Oh, yeah.
I saw it, I found it. Pardon me?
No, I just said about Dino Noble.
Yeah. I guess I was a little surprised that. I mean, I understand that the Siding Commission, the Siding Commission would have the final word, but I I guess I didn't realize it. And of somebody with an interest like this, Dino Noble, they don't have an obligation to communicate with the local. Authorities, they can just go right to the Siding Commission.
So under under docket thirty four of the Siding Council, they're they're obligated to contact us once the application is filed to Siding Council. And inform us, so you basically, you're supposed to inform the official that you otherwise would seek approval from. So they're following docket thirty four that this comes in, they actually sent me the plans, if anyone is interested, for both locations. Because one is proposed off of a portion of the facility off Drake Hill, the other will be off Woodland Street. And this is their, they they, in in having staff, we've had meetings with them to discuss your business outreach, one of the things they discussed was. Issues with power, power surges that occur at the facility. And the the construction of these fuel cells is supposed to address some of those concerns, so it makes our site long term. A viable option for the for the company. And addresses some of the kind of. Drawbacks that they're they're telling us about our location.
In the in the material they sent you. I didn't see any drawbacks in the letter that Kevin's referring to.
No, no, the drawbacks are are the fact that they're dealing with power surges. So so that this is what the the construction of the fuel cell is supposed to provide their own source of additional source of energy, so that they're not solely relying on ever source at their provider.
Why does a fuel, yeah, I'm not sure how a fuel cell generates power, but I guess that doesn't matter. It's not the only thing I don't know much about.
All right, Mike.
I, well, I do have a question on that, you know, the sixty five Woodland, I assume that's up in Powder Forest. Not near the homes, but what is the Drake Hill Road off of, where are they actually talking about that?
They're building a building down there where the railroad tracks used to go across Drake Hill. Drake Hill Road, you know.
I'll pull it up right now.
It went under the road, yeah.
Yeah, we don't have any say over what the actual building looks like.
I'm not sure that building is what they're referring to, but there is a building being built in there.
So, so here's Metro Bay's parking lot. On the on the left hand side of the screen. And down below, that's where they're gonna propose, there's another. Facility just scan down. Now, they already have. Stuff here.
Okay.
The fuel cell will be the red, the little red drawings, I'll let me zoom in maybe for you.
That's a little leg, the red Lego is the cell, fuel cell?
That's the fuel cell.
All right, and what does the exterior of that thing look like?
I'm gonna see if I got it here. Yep, right here.
It looks like a big storage container.
Yep.
It does.
That's what it looks like right there.
All right, so we don't, we don't have any say over the exterior look?
What what you could do, because, I mean, although it's it's entirely within the jurisdiction of the Siding Council, you can make comments to the Siding Council. As it relates to. I would say screening in this case. This this is very similar to, there was a case that's out of Glastonbury where they put. The same size fuel cell in a residential neighborhood, and really, the only thing that they couldn't change how the fuel cell looked itself. But what they could do, what you could influence is how it's properly screened, so you don't see it. But. What I would say is that. If we want to make those comments. One, we have a deadline to submit the comments, and two. We really should make sure we can point to a zoning regulation. That would require the screening of this thing. And I'd have to, I'd have to look at the center code, I think this is this, this is the center.
Where's it gonna be visible from? I mean, I can't think of a. I mean, I I can't think of a a
Drake Hill Road.
Be able to see the thing unless you're standing by the dumpsters in Metro B's parking lot.
No, you could see it from Drake Hill Road.
You could, you'll be able to see it from Drake Hill.
Yeah, the three houses used to be that they tore down. Um, you could see, you used to be able to see those.
Yeah, that's that's the area that's.
Yeah, I guess, I guess there was, I, yeah.
There's still a house in there, right?
Well, on the other side of the road, yeah. On the other side of whatever, that, I don't know that it ever had a name.
Right. I guess there's none.
Well, it's sort of an open area down in there, because the railroad tracks used to be there.
Right.
So what's the deadline, Mike, do you know?
I'm gonna pull up the letter right now.
While you're doing that, I wanted to ask you about a um solar cell project that I read about, which was somewhere down in down toward New York and Connecticut. And one of the comments that was made was that the solar cells were not taxable as private as property. And I thought, hmm, I don't think that's the case in Simsbury.
No, we actually, we are getting a tax revenue from our facility uh right now, they they have to pay, uh, they have to pay uh property tax, just like as if it was a normally, I'm sorry, I'm just pulling up the deadline from the Siding Council, she didn't, she didn't cite the deadline that we need to submit by. Um, but we are, we are collecting, like I said, taxes from uh uh our solar farm, although you know, some of it is under appeal right now, I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, well, Mike, you don't have to find it now, if you could just post it to the to the drop site.
But Dave, the 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 operation that you were thinking or read about, was that a solar farm or is that a cell as referred to in this letter? Um, an energy cell related?
It was a solar, it was a solar farm of.
Oh, okay.
Some, I forget how many acres, not as big as ours. But it was, you know, it's trying to do all this wonderful stuff, and a little part of the story was that it, the solar cells weren't taxable, and I thought, I don't think that's right.
No, uh, so uh comments are, are, the deadline for comments is January thirteenth, twenty twenty one.
Okay, so we better.
We have time and I will upload all the drawings that were submitted by Bloom Energy for you. And we can put this, put this on the agenda for the next meeting if the commission wants to discuss it.
Yes. Just a sort of an informal or something, I don't know what you discuss it under, it's not even, it's not even an application for us, so it's correspondence.
I will put it on a general commission business.
Yeah.
It's just a Siding Council referral.
Does that property get the center zone or adjacent to it?
I think it's, I think it's a budding, actually. Because I don't think that the center's code is any deeper than uh the the properties. Well, no, I I
Yeah, the inside houses.
I don't really know.
Yeah.
I can't exactly picture it.
I'm pulling up the map as we speak, because you have I think it, I think Bruce is right, it butts the center zone, but it may not be in it. My computer is not cooperating. Um, I I'll have that the zoning designation information for the commission, I'm sorry, Mike, JIS is not cooperating right now for me.
Okay.
All right.
But this this idea could become a lot more prevalent in the future. Um, I could see where other offices and, you know, a shopping center or something would want to put one of these on their property, it makes sense.
So while I was in Waterford, uh, the the Walmart in Waterford actually did a small fuel cell to power all the refrigeration units for the store. Uh, so yeah, you're right, this this could make its way into a commercial application throughout the community.
Uh, it's an alternative to a generator, right? I mean, and and it takes a slightly larger footprint than a, you know, an eighty kilowatt generator that has a massive V eight or V ten or V twelve engine in it, you know, I mean, it's 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 really not all that different.
Reality.
But we can regulate the generator.
A lot cleaner than the other.
But there, isn't there a power uh requirement that has to generate so much power before the Siding Council gets in it?
Yeah, there's there's a threshold, and I I just, if it was solar, it's one megawatt. That's where, if it's less than one megawatt, it's local jurisdiction, greater than one megawatt goes to the Siding Council. Um, fuel cells are not a hundred percent on the current statute division between local versus Siding Council.
And and what is the renewable energy source associated with a fuel cell? It uses natural gas. So what is renewable about that?
How does it use it?
I think it uses hydrogen, I don't think it uses natural gas.
Yeah, I mean, I I think we're getting into the science of how a fuel cell works, I think it splits, I don't think it burns it, I think it puts it back into its natural elements.
Its advantage is it creates water, uses hydrogen and oxygen, and it creates water and no CO two. And generates electricity directly from the combination of the elements in the water. Other than that, it's magic.
Yeah, well, the little planet Mike had up there mentioned something about natural gases, why I asked.
I I didn't think they worked in natural gas, anyway. But you're right, this, the picture that you showed, the drawing showed I thought a natural gas.
It said something about natural gas.
Something like.
Yeah, it shows, it shows a new gas line coming in and a water line.
But I'm pretty sure that uh fuel cell's beauty is it works from hydrogen.
There's a blown up version of the of the plant area. The blue line is the the new water line and the yellow is gas.
Well, we don't, that doesn't say natural gas, it could be any, could be hydrogen.
Uh, we don't have hydrogen gas lines running through the Simsbury.
You gotta get it from somewhere.
Well, what are they gonna connect to, I'm not sure.
I don't know.
Okay.
So I'll put that, I'll I'll upload those plans and the letter from the council, it's through your packet.
I more expect you to give us a whole explanation of how fuel cells work.
Wikipedia.
All right, motion to adjourn.
Uh, second, second by Mike. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Close. Thank you, guys, Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas. See you all in the new year.
Yes.